Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education for August 12, 2019. This is going to be a relatively short meeting, but anyone in the audience who wants to follow along with our agenda, we have agendas outside of the door just to the right. You can follow along, anyone watching at home can go to our website, levonypublicschools.org. You can highlight over the board tab and follow along if you drop down and it'll show agendas. Also, there are blue slips outside of the door on the same table for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. With that, we'll go ahead and get going, and I would note that we are missing Mrs. Bradford and Mrs. Burton tonight, but we still hopefully will have a quorum. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here, President Johnson.
Here. We do have a quorum. Item two is audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. Anyone in the audience have a blue slip that they want to address? I'm seeing a lot of shaking of the heads, no? Okay, so we'll move on to item three, appointment of student services coordinator. And could I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Megan Sproul as student services coordinator in the Student Services Department beginning August 13, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Oquist.
We'll start with Mr. Archibald, thank you, President Johnson.
Oh, he blended into the background, Mr. Archibald.
Must be a very good-looking background.
Oh, boy.
We'll move on from that.
Too much, we're moving on. Thank you, I got the hook early. It's a delight to talk about Megan. Her education includes a Bachelor of Science from Wayne State University, a Master of Art in Speech Pathology from Wayne State, and she has or has completed an administrative certification program in the area of special education through Grand Valley State University. In education, she has over 22 years' experience in total. This includes being a special education teacher in East Detroit, a speech pathologist in both Livingston Educational Services Agency as well as Waterford Graded School District. She has been with Levonia Public Schools since 2005, serving in the capacity of both the speech pathologist and most recently as a program specialist. Megan brings with her a wealth of knowledge and experience and will be a rich addition to the Student Services Department in this capacity.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Archibald. We are very excited, as you know, as we shared with you in the study session last week, we outlined for the Board of Education an opportunity before us as we took a look at these student services programs that the district offers and our support via RISA, via the Act 18 program. One of the things we brought to the Board of Education was a response from RISA to our request for additional supervisory funding. As you know, we've taken on additional leadership for programs across the county, both within our own district, we've opened additional ASD classrooms, we've expanded on a number of the programs that we already oversee, and just recently, the county changed their process for servicing ASD classrooms, and so we now employ ASD coaches paid for by the county that service seven other Western Wayne districts. That program is under the leadership of Levonia Public Schools. So as those programs have expanded, we have found the need for additional supervisor staffing, and so RISA did provide additional supervisory staffing funding, so we are very pleased, I hate to ruin the surprise of item number two, but we are actually bringing to you the recommendation for two student services coordinators this evening. Both of them are up at the MACE Conference, which is the State Special Education Conference, so they're not able to be here this evening, so I'm going to save some of my personal remarks for each of them until next week. They will join us during the communications portion. But we are thrilled to be bringing to you two extraordinary individuals, very highly qualified with great experience in LPS with our Student Services Program.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the appointment of student services coordinator. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, and congratulations to Ms. Sproul.
And again, she will be here along with Dr. Terrell during our communication portion of the regular meeting on the 19th.
That then moves us to item four, appointment of student services coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Kirsten Jacobson-Harm as student services coordinator in the Student Services Department beginning August 13, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank, and I do see Mr. Archibald now.
I'm separating my, I'm being separated from the background?
Yes, unfortunately.
Kirsten's education includes a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Eastern Michigan University, a Master of Arts in Speech Language Pathology from Eastern Michigan University, and this December she will have completed the Administrative Certification Program in Educational Leadership through Grand Valley State University. Her experience in education includes over 20 years' experience, first as a speech pathologist with West Bloomfield Public Schools. She came to Levonia in 2001 as a speech pathologist, she served in that capacity for 13 years. She has also been a Frost Resource Room Team Leader, and for the past three years has served as a program specialist, in part overseeing the cross-category, cross categorical resource center programs at Randolph, Grant, Johnson, Frost, and Churchill. Again, like Megan, Kirsten brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the program, and the reorganization and insertion of these two individuals as coordinators will serve the teachers and students of the district extremely well.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Mrs. Oquist.
So I would concur, and again, I'll save my personal comments for each of these candidates for next week, but one of the things that struck us as we were completing the interview process, both of these individuals came forward to us with the highest recommendations from the interview teams and from leaders and staff within our district, and the ability for us to take a look at the programs that span pre-K through post-secondary, so literally from preschool through age 26, the depth and breadth of our programs, the compliment that Megan and Kirsten have to one another and the programs with which they've worked, we think will be of great benefit to our staff and ultimately to our students. So we're excited to have you meet them in person tomorrow. We know we've shared a lot with you prior to tonight about their background and what they bring forward, but the experiences that each have had within Levonia Public Schools and within a variety of our programs, we believe will continue to be one of the greatest assets as we move forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of appointment of student services coordinator. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Jacobson-Harm. Look forward to seeing her next week.
Yes.
That'll move us to item five, appointment of Cooper Assistant Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Kimberly Phelan as Assistant Principal at Cooper Upper Elementary School beginning August 14, 2019.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Archibald.
Good evening again. By all accounts, pending a favorable vote, this will be the second most exciting thing to happen to Kim in the past few weeks, in that, not that it isn't exciting to become an Assistant Principal at Cooper, but she was also recently married and it was...
Congratulations.
Just a couple weeks ago.
Our good fortune is that marriage caused her to relocate to this area. Her education includes a Bachelor of Science in Human Development and Family Studies from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, a Master of Arts in Elementary Education from St. Xavier University, and a Master of Arts in School Leadership from Concordia University in Chicago. Kim's education experience spans 14 years as both a teacher of 7th grade English Language Arts and administration in Illinois. For the past seven years, she's been Assistant Principal at two or three different elementary schools, most recently at Jane Adams Junior High School in Schaumburg, Illinois. Again, she was recently married and relocated to Michigan, and I think we will soon find out that that is not only Erin's good fortune, but also ours. Kim impresses us, we had an opportunity through the vetting, through multiple interviews, as well as talking with numerous references. It was summed up by one of the references telling me that you folks have hit the lotto. Kim impresses us as a knowledgeable, supportive, passionate, and skillful educator and leader. Her follow-through work ethic and communication skills are just three of the many attributes that have stood out, again, throughout the interview and vetting process. She will be a tremendous asset to Cooper Upper Elementary School as well as Levonia Public Schools and our entire school community, so we are delighted to have Kim on board.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Anything to add, Mrs. Oquist?
Thank you, President Johnson. Mr. Archibald did a great job covering that, even in his camouflage setting, and so we are thrilled to bring forward this recommendation to you and very excited for Cooper Upper Elementary, of whom we have many, many of our colleagues from Cooper here this evening, not surprisingly, to welcome Mrs. Phelan to our district. I would concur with the things that Mr. Archibald shared, and what I will share with you is we had many, many, many candidates for this position and for a number of our leadership positions in the district this summer, for which we feel very fortunate, and we've had interview teams move through, as you know, a very thorough process as we go through this, and one of the things that struck us was how many folks from our teams, both from the administrative ranks and district leadership, said, "For whatever position, we have to have Kim in this district." And so we had the opportunity to spend time with her with our interview teams, as well as spending some extended time, both Mr. Archibald and myself, and I would concur that one of the things that struck us was her passion for the work that she does with students, the work that she does with staff, the importance of building personal relationships with the people with whom she's working so that she understands and knows them and understands their needs, and therefore together they are best able to serve the children entrusted to them. As you know, we place high value on that in Levonia. Secondly, her breadth of experience, both as an educator and as an administrator in Illinois, spanned many of the initiatives specifically in the area of literacy that are also a focus for us as we move forward. So the combination of her soft skills and certainly her experience led her to, easily to the top of the pack, and we are thrilled to be bringing the recommendation to you this evening for her appointment at Cooper Upper Elementary School.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board at this point?
Congratulations.
Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, to accept the appointment of upper elementary assistant principal. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, that was so nice. How do I follow that? At first, I would like to say thank you to Superintendent Oquist, the Board of Education, and Cabinet. I mean, they were the nicest people to interview with. I've sat through a lot of interviews in Michigan and...
Our Cabinet?
Yes. I mean, Cynthia called me before my wedding just to wish me well, so I was like, that alone was wonderful. Driving into, actually before I start, driving into Levonia, it said Families First on the sign, I was like, I mean, this is where I'm meant to be, my gosh. But thank you for the opportunity to serve as an Assistant Principal in Levonia, it means so much to me. You know, to get started, just to give you a little bit of background, I know they gave it to you, but professionally, I've worked in the education system in Illinois for 14 years, and I've worked tirelessly with so many amazing educators and administrators to move district schools, teachers, and students forward, and my passion lies with some of the most challenging students, struggling learners, and I firmly believe that every child can learn, and it's our job to figure out how to make that happen, and I promise you that I will work with the students of Levonia, but specifically the students of Cooper, to figure out how to make them, help them to achieve their very best. I know that that brings challenges. So what brings me to Michigan, as they said, two weeks ago, I got married to a once Illinois resident, but then changed to a Michigan resident, but if you ask him, technically, he was always a Michigan resident, but his professional background in sales convinced me to make the move, the four-hour move. But in all seriousness, though, this was a bittersweet move, because I was able to be in a state with him, but I was leaving my parents, I have seven siblings, and almost 11 nieces and nephews, and however, what I've learned from distance relationships is that support is support, and your family is your family. And I'm here because my parents and my siblings are very supportive, and I'm here because my husband, Aaron, is extremely supportive, and I have their love and support always. My journey in education moves on, and it takes me here to Michigan, and I don't know everything, but I'm certainly going to bring what I have here to Levonia and do my very best, and I'm going to learn alongside my new Cooper family, and I'm going to do my very best with Shalonda to try to do, make it even better, and bring high achievement for those students. I hope that I will have your support along the way, and I look forward to making Cooper and Levonia even better. So thank you so much for this opportunity, I am so excited, so much so that I got started a little early and I went in today. I hope you don't mind. Thank you.
I have obstructive view, is that your husband?
Yes.
Why don't you introduce him?
Erin. And I'm actually Mrs. Simolean, but according to my social security card and my license, it's still Phelan, so...
How do you guys do?
I will be Mrs. Simolean and Cooper.
Thank you. You guys are welcome.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the special meeting. We'll just take a few minutes so that we can personally congratulate you, and then we'll be back on for our committee of the hall, so at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening, and for those of you who are watching, we are back, and this is our Committee of the Hall meeting for August 12, 2019. Again, this being the Committee of the Hall, if you're tuning in to watch a little more discussion on items, this is the meeting to turn into. We've generally seen these items at least once, perhaps twice before, so tonight we will get into a little more discussion. We do not have a very long committee meeting tonight, but there are some interesting items. So item one is audience communication. I do not have any blue slips, I do not see anybody in the audience with a blue slip, so that'll move us to item two, Committee of the Hall. I do not have anything. Mrs. Oquist, do you have anything tonight?
I do not.
Thank you. That takes us to item three, building in sight, and I'll turn it over to our chair, Mr. Centers.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have one item this evening, and it is bid results for boardroom AV equipment. Mr. Francis.
Mr. Centers, thank you very much. Joining me this evening from Barton Mallow is Lindsay Johnson-Lemieux.
Hello.
Lindsay has been helping us, helping steward this process for the AV equipment for this very boardroom has been going along. Her colleague, Brian, is actually the person who drew it, but Lindsay has been managing the process, the bid process, the drawings, the walkthroughs, the post-bid interviews, et cetera, so she's very familiar with the project, and any information that I screw up, I have told her to quickly fix on camera, so. I want to just give a brief overview of the equipment in the project in layman's terms, just to kind of go through and say some of the items that we are getting. You had in your packet, you know, the bid specs, there's a whole map of it, it can be very confusing, especially because it's small, it's hard to see, but generally speaking, I think we can keep it pretty simple, and we did walk through some of these items last week at the study session. But before I do that, also, I just want to give for the board and for the community listening at home, watching at home, or who will watch this later, a little background on some of the current equipment that we have. Most of the hardware that you see in this room, the cameras, the speakers in the ceilings, the televisions, are from the basically early to maybe mid 2000s. In the world of electronics, that's very long in the tooth, but we, you know, we've been maintaining them and using them, they've served us very well, I would say, over the years that we've had them, and the new equipment that we're moving towards will give us the capability to have high-definition quality-type video and, you know, more digital mixers, et cetera. So having said that, some of the items to give you a little flavor, this boardroom and the hallway adjacent to us has ceiling speakers. We're going to keep where they are, but we're going to replace them with new speakers. We have the four cameras at the front and back of this room, those will be updated, new HD-quality cameras for videoing the board meetings. The microphones that we're using currently in the Committee of the Hall setup will become wireless microphones. Those wireless microphones will be used by the board and the superintendent and whoever is speaking to the board at the committee meetings, and they'll also be used by cabinet members during your regular voting meetings. The board will have hardwired, gooseneck, but updated, with the ability for you to tap them on and off in front of you, as well as the wireless do that during the committee meetings and for Cabinet. Last week, we talked about going fully wireless, and I wanted to update the board on the status of that. So I had mentioned that, you know, would you like to go fully wireless? We all agreed upon that, and then with a little bit more information from the folks at Barton Mallow and a really nice explanation from Brian who drew the specs, he said we would be potentially setting ourselves up for poor quality. The manufacturer recommendation on the number of wireless microphones in one, you know, smaller area as such, it can handle 10. And he said, you know, I've seen and heard some people try to push 12. Well, if 10's the number, we want the board members all to have their own microphone when you're at the table during a voting meeting, plus the superintendent, that's eight right there. Sharing two between a 20-foot table and nine cabinet members didn't make much sense. When we talked it through, it isn't about buying more equipment, it's about the frequency of the microphones used, and in this size space, 10 is the recommended cap, and again, you might be able to push an 11th or 12th, but eventually you start to drop because it's all on the same frequency. So we thought, why would we, and as you look around the room, we're doing things both physically as well as from the AV end on this room, why would we do all of that work, have the hard work Barton Mallow put in on doing the bid specs, and then take the chance that we might drop mics, et cetera? So for the board table, we'll have them hardwired as we have in the past. Oh, television screens, right, yes. The screens that you're seeing right now, we have the older screens around the room, those will be updated, we'll have 55s, if I have my memory survey against the back, can you?
Yes.
55s behind the board table, 42-inchers over here for the audience, and we'll also have some 65-inch TV flat screens back where the audience stays, and that will serve a dual purpose, one, during meetings, but also, two, the district has many meetings that we use that portion of the room, whether that be ALT, whether that be DCIT, et cetera, and they can be used for those types of meetings, to broadcast presentations, et cetera. Some of the other hardware, and you can jump in to help me out on the backend of it a little bit more, but the things that Fred uses in the room, like a digital mixer, et cetera, could you hit a couple of those offhand?
Sure. So just Fred uses a lot of equipment in the back.
And we don't have to go wrong.
Behind the scenes. So how he puts the graphics, how he gets the cable channel out to the viewers at home, how he can go remotely, off-site, in order to get that broadcast out, so all of that will be updated. It will also give him the ability to be more wireless, so trying to stream something onto YouTube will be a little bit easier with some updated equipment. It won't be, doesn't have to be an analog line anymore, so. And he also won't have to be tethered to the room, because some of the things will be on an iPad, so it'll allow him, if he needs to adjust something in this room, he can come in with his iPad, adjust it real quick, and then go back to what he was doing.
So I just wanted to just continue that and just to share with you and with our community. So we not only have the capability to livestream our committee meetings and our board meetings here, but as you had shared, also when we are off-site. As you know, a couple of times a year, we hold meetings at our school locations, and we're able to do that. That is a multi-hour process at this point to set that up. With this updated digital equipment, that will literally be a pretty seamless process that will be able to be done very, very quickly. And so we are, we need equipment that not only allows us to tape the meetings and to broadcast them on our cable channel, also to livestream here and at remote locations. As you know, we also keep content going on our cable channel, which we will be able to update more frequently and be able to include more video presentations, which we think will be more engaging for our community as well. So beyond the things that you will physically see, some of the things we're most excited about are actually some of the technology that will be going in, that will really bring us into current-day technology. We have some pretty antiquated boards back there, and as we had folks come in to initially take a look at what we had and move on, some of the feedback we had gotten was that equipment was not even recognizable in current-day. So we're pleased to not only be able to have the functionality in this room, but for what we're able to put out to our community, both during meetings and then between meetings, we believe will also be greatly enhanced.
So getting to the specifics of the bid, we did have three bids that came in. We are recommending Tel Systems out of Ann Arbor, who is the lowest responsible bidder. We had a post-bid interview, Lindsay and Brian from Barton Mallow were in attendance, as well as myself and Stacy Jenkins, our administrative communications, and Fred Caron, who works this equipment. So we had a very good, very thorough and extended conversation. The capability to handle the work, we are very confident, very comfortable with. The timeline he gave once we get started would be approximately three weeks. He's very, very knowledgeable of the equipment, the systems, I mean, I think the meeting was, it was a fascinating meeting because he kept drawing out things, and I mean, it just, hey, you can try this idea, we can set it up this way, it was pretty much, you know, whatever works best, we can handle, and it looks about a three-week from beginning to end, and we're aiming for October. Tel Systems is very busy with summer work, as you all can imagine, that the summer work that's occurring now as August winds down, and then in September, kind of going back and any questions, concerns from summer projects, so we have a nice timeline that between when the board schedule meetings are and Tel Systems' calendar, it works out nicely for a late September, end of September into October timeline for the work. We have $109,849, as you can see from your documentation, which was, the bids were relatively tight, the other two were much closer to each other, and it really boiled down to, with our discussions, his labor rates, because the equipment, generally speaking, can be very similar in cost, his labor rates were just frankly lower, and he was 100% confident that he didn't miss something, that his number was not lower because...
He went through everything.
Yeah. Yeah, we were in there for a little while. So it was, like I said, we're confident and comfortable, but even having said that, there are things that are behind these walls, wires, et cetera, we would, through Barton Mallow's recommendation, a 5% contingency, so in their letter and in my memo to you, we have a rounded... So, in their letter and in my memo to you, we have a rounded number of $5,500, which is approximately 5% as a contingency, in case we get into the ceilings or anything else that may occur, or potentially a piece of equipment that might be needed as things are being connected, et cetera. Is there anything that you want to add?
I just think that it's good to point out that everything will be zoned. So, if you wanted to turn off a certain zone of speaker, if you wanted to turn this side to have something on that display different over here than over here, that's possible. So, I don't think it's set up that way yet. So, you'll have a lot more functionality if you want to split the room up into threes, or if you want the hallway to hear or not hear. So, everyone likes options.
A little flexibility.
We won't miss, like, a broadcasting of board meeting. In the meantime, like, I know there's a study session that doesn't get broadcast, but we won't miss anything. They will be, our old equipment will still be usable, and we'll be able to use it. We won't miss.
When we go in October, up to then, no. We won't miss. So, for, obviously, for August now and into September, we're going to use the equipment that we currently have. Once we begin, and I spoke to Mrs. Oquist and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Centers about this separately, just to give a little heads up, and I'm glad you brought it up because I forgot to bring it up. When we begin, we have that three-week window, but my recommendation is, let's just have the community know and understand that the committee meeting that's occurring in October may not be live. We'll still broadcast it, we'll still put it up on the channel. People can watch after, but it may not be ready to be live. That way, if it is, we've accomplished something. If it's not, no one is confused or surprised.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. And following that is an empty week, and then moves on to a study session. So, if we are not able to broadcast that mid-October committee of the whole meeting, it actually gives them a five-week window to install without any broadcasted meetings. So, our goal will be to broadcast that meeting. If not, we will have it taped, and then we'll have it immediately uploaded on our website. So, that may be the only meeting that we might miss livestream. What we'll do in advance is, in the weeks leading up to that, we'll put that information on our website. We will also post it that evening on our cable channel and indicate that we're in the process of transitioning equipment, and that it may not run live, but where they could find that. So, we'll go through with Mrs. Jenkins and have that communication plan, so our community doesn't turn it on and wonder if we've changed our processes.
And in the meantime, with regard to the tables, there's not much sense, even though the tables will be ready shortly, there's not much sense in bringing in the new board table because we wouldn't have the microphones or any of the equipment to wire it up. So, we're going to continue to use the table that's there. Our team put it back together last week and wired it back up again, so Humpty Dumpty's back together again. And we'll use it for, you know, a couple more meetings. And then, when it comes time for Tel Systems to do the work that is in this bid, if the board approves it at the voting meeting next week, then what we'll do is we'll have the carpentry coordinated with Tel Systems and the AV equipment, so that the tables come in and then they can get hooked up.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got a few. Phil, in terms of funding, which, where is the funding coming from?
This is Bond.
It's the Bond. Okay. That's a 2013 bond, right?
Yes.
Okay. I know you mentioned the sizes of the screens, that the ones hanging close here are going to be 42 and then 55. Can you give us an idea what sizes these are, so we have maybe an idea of how they're going to be different? Is there a way to...
Those are, we mentioned 30?
I want to say they're 36. They're going to be higher to the ceiling.
Yeah, they're probably, yeah, these are probably right in the 30s. And then, you're saying we're going to start off the 42s a little higher for the headspace, right? Plus, the newer screens are not only thinner, but it's mostly screen, whereas they're still a bit bigger.
Right.
Yeah, so you can get a similarly sized TV with more screen as the older versions.
We're also adding articulating arms on the back wall, so if you needed to swing out the TVs for viewer...
That'll be nice.
Viewers, you could do that.
Okay. In terms, you said the cameras are going to be replaced as well?
Yes.
These, when they move them, there's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some noise.
There's some noise. How is the new one?
Well, they're all going to be moving, so you're kind of hearing the gears move. They most likely will be a little bit quieter, just because it's newer technology, but I don't think you're ever going to get rid of some noise, just because it's the gears moving the camera.
I think we have one that's particularly noisy. We hear that one a lot.
Well, maybe, newer technology tends to be a little more smooth, so...
I need to amend a statement. I said it was from Bond, and I apologize. This is not coming from the 2013 bonds. It's coming from Capital Projects.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Smith had put that aside. My apologies.
Okay.
I have Bond on the brain all the time.
The microphones that are going to be on the board table, they're going to be wired. Right now, they come off. Is it going to be similar to that, or is it going to be a different kind of a microphone?
The connect on it, you mean? Where you can pop them on and off? That's actually something I haven't asked. I never thought that. Do you happen to...
I'm pretty sure it's the same, it's going to be the same gooseneck, depending on if it's on a wireless base or if it's connected to the wired board table.
Can they pop it off?
And then put it on a wireless base.
Okay, so it sounds like it would be coming off.
Okay, so you can pull off, because the goosenecks that we have now, you just push a little lever on it, and the microphone comes off.
Off the table.
Off the table, the way it is now. There's no microphones.
Let's look into that, and we'll pay that in update.
Entirely.
We'll double check.
We'll double check.
Then, when we talk about the wireless, we have a podium. Will the podium be wired or wireless?
It will not have the line that's coming through. I checked in, and we had said that it was going to be wireless.
Okay.
And there's going to be some, a little bit of training for us. There's going to be a lot of training for Fred, and there'll be a little bit of training for all of us, I think, just to make sure that we know what button to push, so we're on or off, that we don't turn our mic off by accident, little things like that. I think we'll all get up to speed pretty quickly.
You hit on my last question, is the microphones can be turned on and off at the board table, the wired. How are we going to know if it's on or off? Is there a light on it?
There will be a light.
Okay.
As requested.
Is it going to be two lights, like green and red, or is it going to be on or off?
The standard that I heard was green-red.
Green-red, okay. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Francis, our current cameras, are they considered digital? Are they, you know, the...
Analog.
They're analog, so...
Our current ones are analog.
Everything's analog.
Yeah, everything's analog. So, the current, the upgrade is digital, and are they, they film at a certain pixels or is it HD, ultra HD? Is it...
Discussion was HD, and I stopped there.
It is digital. So, it's going to aid in how you stream your video.
But it's not high-definition?
It may be. I'm not entirely sure. I can, it's definitely going to be a better picture. Now, with the cable channel, cable channel is still analog, so that may or may not improve, depending on how we can get new equipment from the cable providers. But, anything that will be out streaming digitally, it will be a very nice, clear, crisp picture, and everyone will be able to be heard. And the cable channel is kind of a work in progress, once we start working with the different vendors, trying to find out if we're going to have an analog still, because it's based on a cable box provided by the cable provider.
All right.
Does that, did I make a...
Well, I think, I think I understand. It's like, what we send them is one thing. What they broadcast may be something different.
What their box can actually project out to the community may be a different...
I understand.
I don't want to promise HD out if we can't get the cable box, because that's not...
Okay.
All right. This is more of a non-HD anyway.
You have a face for writing on. That's what you're saying.
I think, oh, sorry. I just think, as we're talking here, I think one of the things, we have needed an upgrade for a long time, and so I think this is going to be great for the district. I think it's part of what you said in terms of connecting and engaging with our district, making it easier to be seen, making it easier to access the videos and that sort of thing. I think we could have gone, you know, 10 steps to make it ultra-high definition, ultra... But I think that we upgraded and made it better, also being conscious of the money that we spent. So, I think it was a balance, and I appreciate you striking that balance of, we need more, we need better, but we also want to save the money, as much money as we can. So, thank you for doing that, that it's going to be better, but it's not going to be ultra-high definition.
On that topic, I would like to, you know, thank Barton Mallow and actually, you know, let you know and sing their praises a little bit, that they were very realistic with us, saying, it's going to cost some money to do this room. You can't just do the audio and not do the video, or vice versa. But they were also very good, I mean, they're honest, they were clear, but they also said, we're not going to go crazy in the design. We're going to get you what you need. It's going to be better than what you're using, and it's going to be very appropriate at an appropriate cost versus designing something to the moon. So, I thank them for that.
I think one of the other things, Mrs. Frank, that I'll build on with that is, oftentimes, we try to zero in on presentations, and so we'll zero in on one of the screens, or we'll feed that up through our system. And it's often difficult at home, especially when we're going through budget slides and other important presentations. Although we have that streaming for the community to see and to play back at a later date, it's very difficult and often very grainy to see that. And so, just in the ability to upload some of that information and have that available to our community during meetings and post-meetings, I think will also be of great benefit.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Regular meeting, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on building in sight?
That concludes building in sight. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That'll take us to policy. Our Chair, Mrs. Burton, isn't here, so Mrs. Bonnefield or Mrs. Frank?
Okay, go ahead. For policy, we're going to review our tax anticipation notes. So, Mr. McDonald is going to present that for us tonight.
I am going to present that for you tonight. As you can tell, I am not Mrs. Smith, so she's unable to be here tonight, so I will fill in where she had left off with you from the study session. In board policy DFEA, we are making the change from electors, proposing the change from electors to community. This verbiage is, this is in the board policy that is consistent with the language that the board adopted last year in board policy DFD, which references a vote of the community. We had also did a check on the legal reference, and that is still applicable.
Any questions?
We recommend first reading for next week.
Okay. Any questions? You did very well.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay. The next one is gifts and bequests.
This is board policy DFGA, and this would make the verbiage in this board policy consistent with the language the board adopted earlier this year, and board policy DFKA, which references the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. At the study session, you had inquired about the reference in the cross-reference and whether that should be updated, and we propose that that would be brought forward at a future session.
Are we on DFGA or gifts and bequests? We're on DFGA, admissions and gate receipts.
Admissions and gate receipts.
Okay. And that cross-reference is one that we'll need to update?
Correct.
KEA?
Yes, and that would be KEA, which is student activities, public performances, and exhibitions.
Okay, great.
That is a one-sentence board policy. And again, for...
First reading. Now, we're going to do gifts and bequests, right? DK?
Yes.
DFK?
DFK. The current board policy does not include staff, but the district would welcome certain gifts and grants that benefit the staff, such as an employee wellness grant. The district has procedures for what would be considered an appropriate gift. Also, at this time, we would like to update the cross-references, cross-reference, as the title of the board policy, JLB, was updated in June.
Any questions?
Again, for next week.
And the last one is authorized signatures, DJAA.
Correct. And the proposed change to this board policy is simply updating the verbiage to a more current language used in industry, for example, drafts to electronic payments and facsimile to electronic.
Any questions? First reading, then?
That would be correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All set? That concludes policy. President Johnson?
You did a great job, Mrs. Frank. Thank you.
There's our big shoes to put.
Just as a note, we don't have a curriculum item on here, but there are no curriculum items.
That's correct.
So, that'll move us to item five, finance committee. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I have nothing.
We do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That moves us to legislative. Mrs. Bradford isn't here. Mrs. Burton isn't here. Mr. Centers, anything that you're aware of? Okay. Then, we'll go to item seven, personnel committee. Mrs. Frank?
No. We don't have any.
We do not.
We do not. That brings us to the end of our agenda. That might have been a man's secret.
Well, the board deserves it. After a very lengthy study session on Monday, we appreciate the time.
Yes, we were here quite a few hours last Monday. All right, so we are at the end of the agenda. There's nothing else, so we are concluded. Thank you.
Thanks. Wow.